Melanie, let's go.
Shots in there too.
Come on.
I need no one to listen to. I didn't want to offend you all.
All right, I'm gonna call to order the town Superior Town Council Work Session for April 7, 2025. Our first item for our work session discussion is the in-depth presentation and discussion of the town budget. Jeff Stone.
Thanks, Mary, can I just mention? We, the plan was to adjourn at 10:00, we can go longer if the council would like, of course, but Jeff's presentation would take about an hour-ish.
I can go, I can go quicker, but if you guys have questions. I will not say a word.
Glad you heard me in the first place.
Can I just start and say thank you so much for the one pager synopsis on the 2025 revenue and expenditures? Super helpful, and we should do this in all of the budgets on an annual basis. I think it'd be really great to see what this looks like 2025 versus 2026 through December 27th, and very helpful.
All right, thank you. So we'll just start with Budget 101. The town has 14 funds and 17 budgeted funds, and a fund is used to segregate resources and expenditures. We use five different types of funds. The first one and the main one that a lot of the operations are out of is the general fund. We have two capital project funds, and we'll go into more detail on all these. There's seven special revenue funds, these are either a specific tax or other purpose on where the revenue comes from. There's three enterprise funds that have six budgeted budgets, these are the water sewer and storm fund, they are really run as a business themselves. And then one debt service fund for open space that we will then add a second one for the approved CIP fund here in 2025. So the first fund we'll talk about is the general fund, it 2025 revenues about 23.5 million. Of that, 19.4 come from taxes. The majority of those, you know, come from sales tax and then property taxes, the next one. The next biggest license and permits is about 1.3 million. That is from billing permits and plan and review fees. Of that 1.5 that we've got budgeted for those revenues, 53% of that is the expense that goes to SafeBilt for the review of those permits. Next set of revenues, charges for services, the biggest of that is the admin fee, and that is what the other funds pay back to the general fund for staff's portion of time. So some of Matt's time, some of my time, some of the people that are involved with the different funds, and you'll see those in the other funds of their paying back to general fund. Next one, rec fees, recreation fees for, you know, participation, about 200,000. Court fines, we have about 150,000 a year, and then miscellaneous revenue. Biggest one of those in 2025 is interest income and then reimbursement for Boulder County.
Hypothetically speaking, when we do get FEMA reimbursements for the marshal fires that were, that revenue would show up in these areas?
That will depend, no, not a lot of it will go on the general fund because it's all depending on where, what fund ended up paying for it.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
So here's just a graph breaking down the revenues of the 23 million by percentage. And then again, a breakdown of the percentages from the general fund taxes that we receive. And as you can see, sales and use tax is the biggest piece of that. General fund expenses, kind of broke these down by department, again, 24.7 million legislative, you know, 154,000. Judicial, 150, again, employee, the judge are the two biggest ones. Clerk department, you know, that's kind of budgeted with, you know, person and some more is the biggest cost. Admin department. Employee cost, ECO DEVO program and sustainability are the three biggest. And then finance department, you can see the breakdown there, and then the communication department, again, as you can see employee cost. And just to kind of go back to employee cost, personnel cost, based on that breakdown of the one page we were talking about is about 8.2 million or about 31.5% of the general fund expenses in total.
Do you know offhand for the website and printing, is the majority of that is printing? Is that with that number?
As well as the upkeep of the website, the kind of the contract with the.
I have no idea what something like that costs, but.
Is the ADA cost included in that?
I believe some of it's.
So we have ADA requirements we have to meet that we're starting to do that's part of that cost too.
I think, you know, just like one of the reasons why like I so appreciate this, this one pager though is like, you know, we've always looked at our budget, you know, in this way and like all the different departments and we've got like employee costs and their share. But like this is the first time that I think I've ever seen like, you know, 8.175 million dollars on personnel.
Yeah.
Like, and it's really hard to just kind of like wrap your head around what our total costs are when we're looking at it on a compartmentalized basis across different departments. So it's, you know, helpful to see all of this, but super helpful to see it in a condensed format.
Agreed.
Continuing on legal expenses, next big one, public safety, of course, that's our contract with Boulder County, so that is our contract with them. Planning and building inspection, again, some employee costs, but here's also where the 53% of that revenue that we just talked about is sitting on inspection services. Park track and open space, breakdown there, you know, biggest one there of course employee cost, but then you have community programs, you know, building maintenance, park maintenance, and then yard waste are kind of the ones that, you know, make up a big chunk. Public works, same thing, you know, the biggest one there is other than personnel is, you know, snow removal. And then non-departmental, this is kind of, you know, I won't call it a catch-all, but this is where everything else goes being the debt payments for the community center, the reimbursement to downtown Superior, marshal fire rebates here, office lease, insurance, and then the big one, the transfer out of the general fund to the CIP fund. And then there's our share of library to Lewisville. So there's just the graph broken down by percentages for that 24.6. So that's the general fund, next we have two capital project funds, well, we will have two capital project funds. One is the set aside 0.3, it's been in place for a while now, for capital improvement program. And then the new one being the 0.315 that was approved that went into effect this year that we'll start, we'll use that revenue to pay off the bonds when we do hear the bonds here in the next couple months.
So is there a, do we have a voter approved 0.3 for capital improvement?
Mm-hmm, we do.
And that's no sunset, no sunset, when was that passed?
Early 2000s, I would say.
Like after open space?
Before open space.
Okay, interesting.
So the breakdown of the first one, revenue 7.6 million, 1.6 in taxes, again, the same type of breakdown. Grant revenues, we've got estimated at 2 million, big portion of that is the GOCO grant, 660,000. And then the Rock Creek Ped project is a $1 million grant, the Sagamore FEMA money is 133, and then Dole Comp Plan Grant is $150,000 this year. So that's a big chunk of that grant revenue. Impact fees for new houses that go in is for schools and parks. And then the transfer from the marshal fire recovery to help with those projects is from that 0.16. And then here's where the transfer from the general fund comes back into the capital improvement program. So that's the revenue side on the capital improvement. Then expenses, 7.3 million, 4.7 for public works, you know, the biggest portion of those are the streets. And then the ops building, parks, same thing, playground improvements, train enhancements, other than the ops building. Admin, the two biggest in there this year is the, finished up in the civic space, and then that comp plan. The comp plan's 225, as we talked, we've got 150,000 in grant revenue. We estimated, we spent about 75,000 last year, so it's a $300 project between comp plan and the traffic plan, half of that being reimbursed through a grant. Then the new program, on the capital side for the projects, will be this year from the bond proceeds. You know, we'll go over this next week, somewhere between 14 and 18 million dollars, recommend to go to 18. And then expenses will be whatever projects, you know, we've got, you know, whatever the board decides will, will spend those, move those projects into here to spend that, those bond proceeds. So the next set of funds are special revenue funds, these have a specific source of revenue, so conservation trust fund. And I'll go into these a little bit more detail, so individually, so I'll go through these quickly. CTF is from lottery money based on population, the open space is the 0.3, landscape fee is the monthly charges. Same with trash recycling, that's based on just a straight pass-through. The marshal fire recovery is the 0.16 sales and use tax that we then transferred to the CIP fund. Urban renewal fund is the TIF, property taxes that then get reimbursed to the metro district developer and the other entities that have raised their mill up, including the town. And then the metro, the Superior-McCaslin Interchange Metropolitan District, which has, used to have a sales tax, is now just property tax-generated revenues. So the first one of those is the conservation trust fund, this is lottery money from the state. And it's based on population, depending on how much money the lottery brings in each year. This year, it's budgeted over the revenues because we have fund balance to use. We were going to $250,000 in pool repair and $80,000 in tree enhancements. Those may change with the ballot measures. The thing about CTF, these expenses from the specific lottery funds can only be used on parks and rec expenses. Open space fund, again, this is the 0.3, sales tax. This again is the capital side, so we've set aside the first, you know, 600,000 or a little bit more that we need to pay off the debt, and then once that is in the debt service fund, then the open space fund gets to where we will, you know, use this money to buy land or use it to do upkeep and master plan implementation. So revenues again are the same, expenses, we have one employee. And then this year, big open space maintenance, you know, upkeep of the maintenance, we have $50,000 for master plan implementation and then $20,000 for open space coordination.
Jeff, quick question on the employee costs, is that just their annual salary, is that their fully loaded rate?
That's fully loaded, yeah. So yeah, when that $8 million you're talking about, that's fully loaded for salaries.
Thank you.
Good question. Next one, landscape fee fund, this comes directly from the monthly landscape fee, you know, with the three different rates based on the type of house. And then we have the expenses of, you know, landscape and landscape water are the biggest. You'll see the admin fee here, this is the amount that the landscape fee pays the general fund for town staff's time. Trash recycling fund is just a straight pass-through, so whenever we get billed, and now as we go to the pay-as-you-throw, whatever the household decides on for their trash will be what we get billed, and then we will bill them for their service they choose.
And at some point, we can assess, you know, a management fee for what our neighbors have been doing.
Next special revenue is the marshal fire recovery fund, this is a 0.16 sales tax that expires in 2032. This used to be the interchange district sales tax that was then repurposed as it was getting ready to expire. And so we've repurposed that to use to help recover from the marshal fire. So that money comes in from sales and use tax, and then that money's transferred to CIP fund as we talked earlier. Next one is the urban renewal area, this is a property tax TIF, tax increment financing. So all the revenue, all the property tax that's generated from across the way in downtown Superior, those 80 acres is collected and then sent to us, that then is sent on to the developer based on, excuse me, a cost-sharing agreement with the developer, they get a big share of it, metro districts get some for their operations and debt. And then some of that is back to Boulder County, the school district at times, and now this year the town for, back in 2003 when this was set, no, 13, 13, sorry, not three. Whatever mill levies everybody had set at that time is what they get the increment off of. If they raise their mills, then that goes back to them, so we set up an application, and then that's what we send to the trustee on a monthly basis.
And also a portion of this, if an entity like Mountain View Fire has a vote to raise their mill levy, whatever that increases, Mountain View gets to keep, and that goes the same for the town or the school district as well, so. That revenue flows back to those entities.
And even before that, we had it set aside, I mean, didn't put that on here, for the fire districts.
And this urban renewal authority also extends to the marketplace in original town. We use this fund to pay for the infrastructure for the Superior Marketplace, but that was a sales tax base tip. a sales tax base at that time. It's been paid off.
Yeah, it's been paid off. Superior McCaslin Interchange Metropolitan District, this is kind of the area around the interchange, including the marketplace, and then also includes the Ouija property up the hill. Property taxes, you can see, we do get some highway signal maintenance fee from CDOT to help maintain the signals in that area. Then we've got grant revenue, and this is possibly for the CDOT grant for the Marshall and McCaslin intersection improvements. Biggest expenses here are the Marshall and McCaslin improvements, the Sycamore 76th Street Mill and Overlay. And then we have landscaping and water in those areas as well as Founder's Park. Their share of the admin fee to the general fund, and then transportation to us, kind of including everything being street and streetlight maintenance as well as snow removal and street sweeping. Then we have our three enterprise funds. These are Water, Sewer, and Storm. There are three enterprise funds, but as the council, you approve two budgets for each of them, one being in operations and one being in capital. It gets rolled up, but it's just easier to see the difference between operation and capital. We, it's been set up that way because operations are, you know, for the operations and then capital is used for projects. And we've used system development fees as well as some operational pieces, operational revenues for those in the past. As we get closer to build out, then the operation revenue will have to cover both of those once the system development fees dry out. So water operations, $3.9 million in revenue. 2.9 of that comes from monthly, you know, service charges and the amount of water everybody uses. Irrigation charges during the summer, about somewhere 50,000. We get some solar panel renewable energy credit revenue and then interest income. Expense side, and again, this is not really a mismatch, but we, I said 3.9 million in revenue, we've got 9.1 in expenses. We're making a big balloon payment in debt this year that will pay off that debt. So that's why it's kind of, and we've been, we've got that money in the bank. So that's what the difference is. Water supplies, $1.1 million. This is part of the expenses that we paid in Northern for our share of their water. Windy Gap is a big one, 325,000. And then our Colorado Ben Thompson assessment, 125,000. And then our pipeline and our pump station to get the water to town is another big chunk of $557,000. Water treatment plant, 565,000, the biggest one there being the plant operator. And then the chemicals that go into the water before it's servicing the town, and then repair and maintenance, and then solids hauling is taking the leftovers of what comes out of the water before, to make it safe to drink. Water storage and distribution, biggest one of those are repair and maintenance for water lines with aging system. And then more importantly, our shifting soils, we end up with water breaks, and that's a big chunk. We also have new end replacement water meters every year, electricity cost for the system. And then non-departmental, this is where I was talking about, we've got a debt payment of 6.25 million to pay off that 2015 debt, so that'll go away. Now, it goes away, but it also gets, you know, our windy gap chimney hollow payment will, you know, kind of come in here as well. There's the admin fee.
So the savings from the 6.25, once this bond is paid off, that'll just go towards paying off the gap?
Correct.
We'll have a new debt payment for that.
And that windy gap payment goes out for like infinity, right?
Yeah, like 2056.
That's like $30 million.
Yeah. And that project is scheduled to be completed May-June?
Yeah.
And then they do testing, and then they're hoping to start filling it later this year. Start, it takes, I think, two years.
They're hoping, they're hoping two to three. It all depends on what the snowfall is and what they can fill it up with. So, and that's what we're working with Northern on now to try to figure out what the operating costs are going to be and what the pumping costs are going to be to get that water over here. So that's kind of what we're working on to make sure we've got everything in next year's budget.
And actually, just along those lines, Brandon was able to organize a trip out to see it. So I think if you haven't been out there, it's pretty cool.
And they're setting up new tours of it, too.
Yeah, it's an impressive site when you see it.
Built by the Europeans.
Then the capital side of water, 7.3 million in revenue. Big portion of that is system development fees, 2.5 million. Next one is grant revenue, 4.1. Mike, I don't remember. So it's the smart meters, and then we've got $3 million, and I don't remember what that is. So I will give that to you. And then we have water leases of about 20K. This is just extra water that we have that we are not using, that we can sell to other people at the end of the year, otherwise we lose it. So we keep as much as we can for carryover the following year, and then we try to sell whatever we don't use.
Sorry, do we sell or lease?
Lease, sorry.
Okay.
It's just leased for the year.
Is there ever a problem, like, does it all go? Whatever you allocate to lease, does it all get leased?
No.
Oh, okay.
And if we, if we have a higher water, water year here, where people are using more water, we won't have water to lease.
Okay.
And are these water rates that we can lease three and 10 years, or do we have ability to lease it any year that we want?
Any year we want, because it's a pool with all the Northern participants.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
Water capital expenses for 2025, 6.5 million. The windy gap loan and allotment contract of 1.46. The smart meters, if we do get the grant this year, 2.25 million. Parks and Public Works op building, that shouldn't say 1.25K, that should be an EMA. The McCaslin new transmission water main, upsizing that is our portion of 250K. Building a solids handling facility, the design of that is 230. Water pump station upgrades of 300,000, and then finishing up the cleaner, refiner, rebuild and replacement are the big projects in the water fund.
Jeff, can I make a quick comment just to panic the council a little bit, like how I felt when I first saw this? So a large portion of our revenues are coming from our system development fees, and we're largely built out, so that's eventually going to dry up, pun intended. So I pulled out the smart meters, and obviously some of these expenses are going to change. But pulling out the smart meters, our revenue, if we didn't have the system development fees, would be about 3.7 million, and our expenses would be about four and a quarter. So that's a problem. And then spoiler alert, we're looking at the same issue with wastewater on the capital side. So just kind of getting that on everyone's radar ahead of time so that we're not having to be as reactionary. Those system development fees are a large portion of these revenues, and we need to think through that so that when we're all built out, we have something, some sort of plan in place and out on what that looks like, but some sort of plan in place to address that.
Yeah, that's a good point, and something we've been talking about, something, one of the reasons for the rate increases that were proposed to the councils for that, continue to try to get grant revenues and other. And then for larger products, projects, we're going to have to see about state funding through loans and stuff like that.
And talking to other finance directors, this is probably one of the biggest issues we've got coming as a state in the fact that as development starts to go away and then prices just keep going up for water, water rates, when you talk to people, you know, are cheap, like, when we, because we work with PVSD on their irrigation water, and I, you know, send them, hey, here's our rates, and here's what we're thinking about the following year. And I, I got back, and he's like, great, thanks for this, even with seven and a half, you're still the lowest in the area.
Our water rates are a third of what they are at Centennial and Parker. But the problem is, we could jack up the rates, and people will use less water, which then puts us in a downward spiral because we still have to pay for the water.
Yep. And that, and conservation. And, you know, with the seven and a half, we thought we'd had everything covered, but as the chimney hollow costs keep going up, the Northern costs keep going up, all of a sudden, as we saw last year in the budget, we're not there at that, you know, break even point that I'd like to be. So we do have some things to look at, and we'll talk about that during the budget process. But I appreciate you bringing it up, and stuff, definitely something Matt and Brennan and I have been talking about, and we've been talking about it for years of trying to figure out what's the best way forward.
Not to put you on the spot, and I'm not looking for an exact answer right now, but forecasting that out, is that like in three to five years, five to 10 years, that we're going to really start thinking about that?
Probably within the next five years.
And I, I would agree with that. I would rather do it earlier than later, just for the simple fact, as you talk about the compounding of, if we were going to do a 5% rate increase and we go to seven and a half, that's 2.5% more. And I know as ratepayers, you don't want to hear that, but I'd rather do a little bit more than what Broomfield and even Riley and Thornton, where all of a sudden it's like, no rate increase, no rate increase, we're going to do five, and then I've gotten 12, 12, and 12 the last three years. Broomfield last year went 30. So we're on chunks.
We want to do a Broomfield.
Yeah. So yes, we will have that conversation starting this year, but.
And we already, we already moved up, right? We were doing 5% increases, and now we're doing some.
Well, and for years, the board actually subsidized water with the general fund because they didn't want to raise the water rates. I mean, we're, we could have been charging a lot more for water a lot earlier.
Yeah, before, I think it was 2019, we were moving over a million dollars of general fund sales tax to the water fund to help the operations. So yes.
All agreeing laws.
Same on fluoride.
The West Water Sewer Operations, 2.3 million. Again, this is directly from monthly charges with solar panel and then interest income being the revenue sources. Expenses, wastewater collections, the two biggest pieces being the wastewater treatment plant with the treatment plant operator, chemicals and electricity, of course, to treat the waste, and then, you know, repair and maintenance. Non-departmental, again, sewers' share of the debt payment that paid off in 2015. And then we did do a 2020 debt for the sewer fund for the headworks projects that's being completed this year. And so that, that is that debt payment. And then there's the admin fee for that portion that goes back to the general fund. And then on the capital side, again, it gets 1.9 million this year in system development fees. And then we are working to use the $3 million that we've had for the ARPA funds of the COVID funds that we are using to do system development fees here in 2025, use a little bit in 2024. We're hoping to wrap it up in 2025.
On those debt funded projects, we get pretty favorable interest rates on those, don't we?
Very low.
Which was one of the reasons to go ahead in debt.
Yes. I don't remember what the rate is, but it was definitely, I want to say it was 3.1 or 3.3. Expenses for the sewer fund, this is where I was talking about the biggest one, we'll be using the ARPA money for the irrigation basin improvements, adding more volume, 2.8 million, equalization ponds, 500,000, and then the smaller ones of what we do to just keep the system up and running. Then the last enterprise fund is the Storm Water Fund. Again, monthly service charges, our revenues, and then the expenses, admin fee, you know, for the permit, keep it clean programs are the biggest ones, storm drainage, repairs and maintenance, street sweeping comes out of storm, and then non-departmental, again, their share of the 2015 debt as well as the admin fee back to the general fund. And then on its capital side, about $240,000 in system development fees, and then the expenses being reservoir and pond maintenance and vehicle replacement this year.
And Mile High Flood District maintains some of those ponds as well.
Yes. A lot of our projects are collaboration with them. Then we do have the one debt service fund for the open space debt service. This year, we will add one for the capital improvement bond proceeds that we're going to get. So that revenue, as I said, is about $665,000 in total, all coming from sales and use tax. The expenses for this year, $392,000 for the 2015 debt, and then the 2020 debt, 266. Once that, the 2020 debt is just interest only, and then once the 2015 debt goes off next year, then that will pick up the extra amount, and we will start paying principal on that 2020 debt and pay that off through 2040. So again, debt service, we have other debt other than what is in that debt service fund that are inside other funds because they're not specifically what I would call debt. So the community center, both the acquisition and improvement are in the general fund. Those were, those are really through a lease. It's called a certificate of participation, so that's why it doesn't show up as debt and why it's in the non-departmental side of the general fund budget. And then because Superior Metropolitan District number one is an enterprise, that debt sits inside those funds themselves because they run as their own business activity. So you can see the debt we have there and when those will, those will be paid off next year. And then the same thing, we added that 2020 debt in wastewater fund, and that'll go through 2049. And then again, we'll add the new debt service for the CIP here in 2025.
So Jeff, looking at the one pager that you provided, and I agree with Mark, this is super helpful. Thank you for pulling this together. Our debt service is roughly 12% of our total expenditures. Is that pretty standard? Is that on the low end? Is that on the high end for municipality?
It's all over the board. For us, that's on the high end because again, 6.8 of that is a balloon payment. That payment in the past has been about 1.5 million.
Okay.
So that, that is a much bigger percentage in 2025 than it has been in the past and what it will be going forward.
But I, but I thought you were saying earlier that 6.25 is going to get repurposed for?
It is, but not the full 6.25.
Okay.
That payment goes down to that Northern payment, which is about, depending on what they finalize this year with those, because it's really not, it's not our debt.
Right.
It's Northern debt that all the participants.
Our share of.
Yeah, it's our share of the debt as well as other expenses, but that's, I want to say 2.2 next year.
Okay. So. It's like 1.6 this year, is it?
For that payment, yes.
So we're going to increase our Northern water, Big Thompson debt from 1.6 to 2.2, but the 6.8 goes away.
Yeah. And that's all in the, it's already been budgeted, so yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, it's not like we're going to free up $6 million, unfortunately.
It would be.
It would be.
We'd have spent it.
And then debt payments for 2025, Mike, this is what we talked about the first time, and adding when these all get paid off. So SMD1 will get paid off this year, the 2015 open space in 2026, excuse me, community center in 2034, the 2020 open space in 2040, and then the SMD1 just for sewer will be paid off in 2040 as well.
So this is not going to be a surprise to anybody, given the fact that there's a 40% likelihood we're going to head into a recession this year. Is there an opportunity to potentially refinance some of this? I mean, actually, I know that we've got some pretty compelling rates already on this stuff, but I guess when we go to the markets with the sales tax, it's actually might probably be a good time to be at the markets.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be, it'll depend on what happens. Now, with the last tax cuts, it did change some of the ways we could refund. So usually you can only, like, the debt that will be going here this year, we'll probably have a 10-year call on it.
Sure.
In the past, we were able to advance refund things. That's gone away. So that's been eliminated unless it gets added back. So we don't have that opportunity anymore. But that's a good question. And we'll continue to watch the markets and. And we'll continue to watch the markets and, and who knows, you know, the climate may change, but that's where we're at right now. And Paul did a great job when he was here of refinancing everything and.
Yeah, we locked in some great rates.
Yeah, we've got good rates on all our debt. And then here's the graph that everybody loves of the, the debt. They continues to go down unfortunately, not unfortunately. We're going to have the opportunity to add on to this for projects this year. So it's going to kind of go back up here in 2025, 2026, but, uh, that's the graph.
Well, that's for good cause.
It is, it is good, good cause. So that's all I had for budget 101. Any questions or anything?
And I think that this chart is, is, is always really helpful to look at. And, you know, I think it just shows that like we've, we've been doing a good job in terms of managing things in a fiscally responsible way. And, you know, the, the debt that we've taken on, you know, at times has still been kind of reasonable when you look at the total balance sheet, you know, like over time compared to where we were in the mid 2000s. So, you know, even going to the bond markets, you know, this year for the, the CIP expenditures, we're still going to be, you know, only at the 2020 levels, right? So that was manageable and that will still be manageable now.
Yeah, our debt level from 20 years ago was pretty substantial.
Alright, so that's budget 101.
Well, I appreciate it very much, Jeff. And this, yeah, you want to go into?
See, yeah, this is just kind of our first, you know, listening to the board on what they wanted to see as a one-page. So this is kind of the roll-up of the whole, you know, 2025 budget, based on kind of the, the big chunks of areas that we saw revenue come in as well as expenditures. So I didn't know if anybody had questions on this or anything they want to see changed, you know, as we move this forward. This is just our first, Ben and I sat down and kind of picked the categories and it's kind of what we came up with.
I mean, I think that this is, this is great. I mean, my only question is, you know, what additional specifics could we get from miscellaneous and other? You know, maybe that's impossible and it's just kind of too fragmented.
The two biggest, and I thought this might come up, so I did some diggings today. And I think, I think I will add one at least. A big one is grant revenue. So I think we can add that. The biggest piece of that miscellaneous comes from the system development fees we talked about earlier. And so that, that's a big piece of the revenue. So I thought I'd add a grants line if everybody's okay with that. I thought I'd leave the system development fees, just the miscellaneous because that's going to start going back down, but I could pull those out as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, we, we obviously don't want to recreate the entire budget in this and then put too much, right? You want to have, you know, less is more. I, I think from my perspective, this is, this is really good. And, uh, you know, what I'm really interested in seeing is like how this looks like when you look at it over time. You know, because, you know, if, I think having a one-pager where, you know, this town council or future town councils can look at it and be like, wow, you could really see that, you know, our, you know, personnel costs are increasing at whatever the rate is. Um, and it's just, you know, approaching some sort of like unsustainable, you know, cliff or like, wow, we really spent a lot for like these two years for capital projects, but now we've dropped off, like, why is that? It's like, oh, we had bond proceeds and, you know, like it tells a story of kind of like the overall health when you look at it over time. So I, I'm really looking forward to seeing how this kind of gets, you know, adopted and, and used going forward.
Yeah, I think my only addition is a reserve line because at least with the, the numbers you have for 2025, we're spending $5 million more than we bring in revenue. And that's just coming out of our reserves. So, you know, sort of looking at that reserve number oscillating over time.
So you're saying make these balance?
No, I mean, there could just be a bottom line number that shows how our reserve cash, you know, what it looks like in term, you know? Because any given year, the reserve number is going to go up or down. Um, and I think that's okay. That's a board, uh, council level decision in terms of spending out of the reserve or not.
Now, that's in the budget, but you like, you'd like to see that here?
Yeah, because I think to Mark's point, when you look at this over, you know, you know, five or 10 years, you'll see some years we spend less than we brought in and we're building the reserve and others, you know, especially close to fire, we spent out of the reserve on purpose. And I think that tells the story of the decisions we made.
Yeah, I would agree with that because that was the one thing that's like, ooh, our, our expenses are higher than our revenues. And so having that bottom line, I think answers the question everybody would have of, well, how are we bridging the gap? So having that there. And then, um, I was actually going to bring it up, but you already did. But having, um, out of that miscellaneous, seeing what the grant funding was, because I would be interested since outside of applying for grants, we don't have a full lot of control over those. I'd be interested to know how much of our revenue is made out of that. But otherwise, I mean, amazing job boiling down pages and pages and pages of information down on one page. It's very impressive.
On the expenditure side, the only question I have, you know, we heard at the last one, hey, pull out vehicles. As you can see, it's a small piece of capital projects. I was going to roll that and just leave it as capital projects unless people want to see vehicles. So we'll combine those. Anything else you see on the expenditure side that you have questions on?
My only thought on rolling it into capital projects, when I hear the term capital projects, I'm thinking of physical construction of a bridge or a roadway. And I, general government is more vehicles in my mind, but I don't know how.
I, I'd actually like to see it stay separate. I think this is one of those things that I think residents think that we spend a ton of money on these things and we don't. And if it's, if it's separate, then they can see like, oh.
We haven't, we haven't increased that line in 20 years.
Just considering that like we, we're, that makes sense from a perspective of how you look at the funds, but from a resident, that's not how they're thinking about this. They're just looking at it to see a number of something specific that's relatable, vehicles for their household versus our entire town. And so I think keeping the numbers in there that way is helpful.
That's easy enough to do.
Specifically thinking of requests recently of selling. I'd like to leave it for now.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we, I'm fine with these and, you know, we tweak it a little bit, that, that's fine. But, you know, it's going to really tell the story just looking at it over time. Because wow, like you spent a lot that's one year. It's like, yeah, well, like 6.8 million dollars went towards debt service return. And like, that's 10% of the expenditures. Like that's a huge amount, right? So.
Yeah, turn lines tell everything. We don't know what was round here before.
I love to do the capital project thing because I think that we get a lot of complaints, especially as the winter season starts to fade and the whole, like all the damage for, like people get very grumpy about, like as if we're not doing those things. And so seeing that giant number for that is really helpful too.
It would be interesting to know, like most of us, like, well, how does this compare to like other similar communities?
It's not a competition.
Well, yeah, I know, it's not a competition, but we are, we are superior. But like, you know, we've, we've talked like historically about how we contract for a lot of our services. We, you know, and now there's a little bit of a trend of like bringing more in-house and we're getting a little bigger. We've got, you know, more facilities. You know, how do we know that we're spending kind of like the right amount on personnel for a community of our size? And I'm assuming personnel includes, does that include contract labor? That does not?
That's, that's all in cost for town staff, so full-time and part-time.
Alright, so where would, where would our contract labor?
Depends on what, what area.
It's in the departments.
You know, it's in the department.
So like public safety is our, police and what like?
Public works is your plant operators, it's snow, it's all.
Vargas is in parks and rec.
Parks and rec, yep. Because that parks and rec number is big because it also includes landscaping fee. And that's all parks and rec and open space, so.
It's a high priority for our residents though, so it's good to have it on the number.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess my, my, I'm just thinking out loud here, like, you know, trying to think about like actual costs for the people that do the work that are, you know, the public safety aspect of it, like, okay, like we've got police and fire and that, that kind of like makes sense. Putting like the Vargas cost in parks and rec, while I understand that it, it kind of like hides, you know, it sounds like more like it's, you know, that's, you know, work to fix pools and mow grass. And I guess it is, but I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a, a way to kind of break out the contract labor aspect of it so we can kind of see it within the personnel, but maybe I'm just overthinking it.
Yeah, I think the risk is always, you know, you start breaking that $5 million and all of a sudden it's seven lines underneath it. The, the question becomes, I mean, what's the threshold? Because like you said, you know, some of these are really big numbers, like miscellaneous 16 million. But there's like, there's three things that are 80% of it, maybe. Maybe there's a second page to this with like more breakdown.
Maybe we should just ask, can it be like a fun poll where we're like, this is what we've got. What are you not seeing here that you want to see? Like, I don't know, not something that costs money or staff now. Just like a little fun social engagement from the town.
I, I, I think this is, I think this is great, so. Maybe, maybe it iterates over time, but.
Give it a year, let it sink in.
But I think, I think it's really, really helpful to be able to just kind of like see it on one page.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, so thanks very much.
Before we move on finance, can I do quick things?
Of course.
One, when we were in finance committee, Jim brought up what I thought was a brilliant idea when we talk about educating the community and, you know, trying to boil things down. And, um, anybody who wants to see, obviously, the budget 101 can dig into it. I think it's phenomenal. So thank you for putting that together. But Jim thought it would be really fun and I agree because so many people don't understand how much things cost is to do like a one-pager in our like Hello Superior or something where, you know, it, we can educate and then there can be almost like a game component, like how much do you think a stoplight is? And then here's, you know, the options and, you know, top three, get a gift card to a local business or something. But I think it would be beneficial to educate our residents on how much things actually cost because I know when I joined the board and learned, I was like, geez, that's so much more than I thought it would be. So I thought that could be helpful. So I just want to reiterate your idea because I think it would help educate the public.
Tess said it makes the, the mix for spreading.
To add on to that though, um, we could work with somebody. I just, who would that person be on the staff to do something like that?
Well, we have to get communications team involved and then probably Jeff. And then, um, if it's public works type of operations, we get Brandon involved. And if it's parks operating, depending on what operations you're talking about, if you're traffic lights, it'd be Brandon. If it's park maintenance, our playgrounds, it'd be Leslie and her staff, so.
Well, just to like lower the threshold for what we're asking from them. Like I already, when we talked about this email, Brandon asked for some specific prices of things. And so he's already given me that.
Okay.
It's more of like creating the, the content for however this is going to go out. And so would that just be Kevin?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll, and you'll, I'll keep you in the loop too, but.
In the Hello Superior for the summer, there's going to be a, an article on all the grants that we've received. So just everything from like FEMA to GOCO grants and just kind of like talking about like the, the good work that staff has done to.
Leverage money that is.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Or money that we paid into.
Yeah.
That we rarely see.
But like all, you know, additional, additional communication and outreach to the community to kind of explain what things cost. So it's good.
And then the only other thing I had, in case anybody missed it in the update, is Jeff has been with us now for 19 years this month, so that's amazing. I recognize him first, so his commitment to the committee.
And he's only 30.
I know. He has aged a day.
In this role.
Yeah.
Alright.
Good.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Alright, we're on to our economic development strategies.
Very much. Go down the line. So we are in the process of filling our economic development manager position. Hopefully we have somebody on by the early May, hopefully, maybe sooner. So we just did an update on some of the policies that we already had in place. I'll just go through quickly. So the purpose is just to provide incentives and assistance to businesses, new businesses and existing businesses. Here's some of the criteria we use when we talk to businesses about what they need and how we can help, whether it's to retain a business or attract new ones. And if I'm going too fast, just let me know. These are the industries that staff's been targeting. A lot of entertainment, restaurant, retail, course, recreation, sciences, primary employers, hotels are the ones we've been focused on over the last five years. Criteria for applicants, physical location in town, long-term lease, generating new sales tax, contribute to downtown property tax and provide new jobs, high pay, high-paying jobs preferably. And that's support our community goals, diverse quality businesses that contribute, desirable amenities.
What do we consider as a long-term lease?
Five to 10 typically is what we're looking for. Most of, most of the ones in downtown square are 10 years. Uh, and then having the applicant that can demonstrate the financial management capabilities to see the development through completion and sustain that business. And, and the people that are leasing the space to them want to see this as well, the, you know, the carmel and bricks more and those types. Eligible would be nonprofits, home-based businesses, religious, residential living facilities and any business that's previously received a grant from the town. Eligible expenses can include, this is not an entirely inclusive list, but some of the things, exterior, interior improvements, cost of permitting, relocation costs, signage and marketing. These are the tiers we've been using. We've adjusted these slightly because Boulder Baked, which falls in tier two category, received a one-time $50,000 grant from the town. It was a one-time cash. They were the first business to open on Main Street, which was one of the reasons for, for the grant. That was what they had requested. But tier three would be anything less than 1,000 square feet, you know, under five jobs, up to a $25,000 grant or sales tax rebates, you know, performance-based rebates. Something that staff really recommends and encourage because it's, they're performing and they're getting that money back. So there's less risk to the town. And then tier one is anything, it's an anchor. It could be an anchor like Bigsby or you, I consider him kind of an anchor on the, on the north end of the project or an inline retailer that you would see in Rock Creek Village or the marketplace or, or any of our commercial centers. And it's going to have 10 or more jobs and one-time grant of up to 75,000 or up to 10 years with the sales tax rebate plus others. This is just some of the application criteria we ask for from businesses when we're looking at incentive or a grant to them. And then these are some of the things that are available to us to help with the new business. That's sales tax revenue, which is performance-based, building permit fee rebates we've done, construction use tax rebates that are ours, use tax and then lodging fees if it's a hotel type of business. And then of course, um, these are the payments and things that are required for businesses. I'm going to roll back up to the tiers. So these are kind of the caps that staff has been using and recommends. But we have those case-by-case scenarios that for, for the larger type of incentives like Bigsby, you know, a million dollar incentive over 10 years, performance based on sales tax, that half of that is being paid by the city of Louisville. So when you have those type of unique businesses, um, we have the ability to come to council and say, it could be a hotel, it could be a restaurant like Bigsby. We can come to you and say, this is the incentive that we've worked out with the user and see if, you know, what your thoughts, if you're willing to approve it or not. But this, these tiers allow some protection to the town as far as expectation to new businesses that, you know, this is typically what we use unless we want to work out a separate case-by-case deal with somebody.
Would we approach Louisville to see if they would be willing to kick in half for any sort of upfront payment since they're reaping the benefits of the sales tax? any sort of upfront payment since they're reaping the benefits of the sales tax?
We have. We reached out over the last few weeks with Jill leaving. We didn't get, we, we got some questions back, which we responded to, but their new city manager started this week. I meet with her on Wednesday, so I plan on talking to her about it on Wednesday to see what their appetite is. I sent another email to them today, just a reminder and to, I CC'd her on the email so she's aware that some of our stuff are about, but we haven't gotten any commitments.
Historically, they've been opposed to it. And the reason being is their existing statutory plan is fifty percent, their business opportunity plan, bop, is fifty percent of the sales tax refund. And that's all they'll do. When we approached them for Bigsby's half, sorry, a third of the council was in support of going to the full sales tax credit that we were, we were offering. But what they didn't want to do is send a separate message to this business as opposed to the other businesses in Lewisville. They just wanted the level, that's it, this is all we're doing, nothing more.
One size fits all.
That, yeah, that's, that's the approach they had, at least a council conversation. I think everything is always open to a new council and they have a new council. But at least the conversation then was, you know, this is the offer and, you know, sorry, Superior, if you're doing more.
So then that begs my other question. Does that open up a conversation about this perpetual no sunset? They get half the sales tax, but they don't necessarily have to kick in on the front end if we are? Because I would love to have that conversation again.
Yeah, I would like to meet with the new city manager, just have initial discussions with her and just see what kind of response I get.
Yeah. So I'm going to DC on Wednesday and Chris Lee is going to be there.
You know, you're there not to talk to your neighbors, you're there to talk to the elected to DC.
You get those, you get them for like ten years, all the rest of the time is a show.
It's a lot of walking time.
And, and there's, you know, meal time and, you know, we might be sitting on a plane together. But if there's anything that we want to, do you want me to kind of raise the discussion about re-visiting the IGA and coming up with some sort of sunset?
Yes.
Very huge.
I will, I will do that.
That would be helpful.
And also on.
So we want to specifically ask for kind of reconsideration of, of the IJ to put in a sunset and then separate and apart from that, their appetite towards kind of contributing cash in lieu of or in addition to the sales tax revenue share over time for, for incentives on a case-by-case basis?
Yeah, I, I think it's multifold. I mean, sorry, it's also because we've gone more than just a fifty percent credit on sales tax for Bigsby. They wouldn't even step past that. So, you know, minimum match-ups, potentially additional grants and, by the way, sunset.
Yeah. Because in my mind, if we're happy to put up more money upfront and they're only going to match on the sales tax, well, then there should be a sunset and because you can't in perpetuity reap the benefits of us investing in businesses that are coming to our town.
That was a stupid deal we did, though. So I would have to say that if they wanted to negotiate with us, they'd probably want a full downtown Main Street that's going to be creating tax revenue versus you going residential and they're not going to get anything out of it anyway. So I'd much rather just pay off whatever we can with them, which we should in the first place.
There's nothing to pay off. We traded, we traded parcels of land and one's open space now, so, I mean, that was.
Yeah, which was a huge mistake.
Probably.
Yeah, but it's the deal.
It was the time. Yeah, it was a deal that got signed.
So they get point one-two-five percent? Is that what it is?
Uh, one-three-five.
Point one-three-five and we get point one, so it's point two-seven total. And so they get point one-three-five, we get point one-three-five of nothing, they get point one-three-five of downtown.
And we get point one-three-five of what are the periodic decides.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which can't bill up.
No, or they took it as part of the US 36.
Yeah, so it's useless.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just a terrible deal all around.
Right, right, right.
And I think you can very much broach the subject of, we're happy to invest more upfront. Are you willing to do that? No. Okay, well, we need to have a discussion about a sunset because that makes no sense.
Okay.
Matt, when you talked about the financial wherewithal of the businesses that are coming in, and obviously this one applied to new businesses because they won't have the financials behind them, but if we have like a relocation or, you know, business that is having a relocation elsewhere and now wanting to move here, are we asking for financials, like two years of financials, year-end financials, the last two years, P and L, AR, A, balance sheet? And then are we getting year-to-date? Like personally, I feel like if we're not, we should be getting those just to see the financial health of the business.
Yeah. We, so if we issue a grant, we're getting verification that they spent the money first because it's a matching grant. So they have to spend, you know, Boulder Baked had to spend at least fifty thousand in interior improvements or exterior, whatever, before the grant was given. And that came to the council actually, or the previous, the, the board at the time for that. Yes, yeah.
Okay. And then if it's a new business, are we getting like a, a resume or something just to see what is their background and are they?
Yeah, a lot of information they have to give to Carmel or Bricksmore, whoever, when they lease the space.
I really appreciated the Korean barbecue dot BD dot Q presentation where they outlined their financials and their costs to build out and all their projected revenues. Found that really insightful.
And it's more important for the cash grants than the performance based because there's less risk to the town for a sales tax rebate.
On these incentive tiers, what's the line between where staff has discretion versus when it has to come to the council?
Well, it's anything over fifty thousand, but if it's, it's, if it's a sales tax rebate, that would come to the council.
For any amount?
Well, and then what's in the budget right now is only like, I think, fifty thousand in total. So if, if, you know, staff gave forty-five thousand away without coming to the council, all subsequent grants for that year would have to come to the council.
And these, these have gone up. So we adjusted these. These were ten, twenty and fifty for the three tiers. So more of the grants were in the five to ten thousand dollar range that have been given without over the years, over the last few years.
And so I was looking at, at our website and you can't access this information from like the superiorbusiness.org. There's like a link for incentives, but it doesn't actually show you any specific numbers and showing any of this stuff. So I guess the question is like, is that intentional or not? And like, how does this policy compare to our neighbors? Like, are we in the same ballpark as?
Yeah, we have, we are in the same ballpark. We have, we have that information I can send to the council.
Yeah, I would just think that like if we have a published, you know, public incentive policy, we should make it easy to find.
Yes.
I'm gonna, my gut says no, but keep going. I don't know, I'd like it to be more of a conversation.
That was Jill's thought too. She really wanted to have a conversation first. I mean, and I've seen both sides of this.
Like, yeah, I can go both for some reason.
What one, one group said is that a lot of these large companies are looking at nationally. They're doing the desk-side analysis and they want to see the numbers. But I don't think our target, if we're talking fifteen hundred square feet, we're not target, we're not being targeted by a large multinational company. These are small, small businesses.
Okay.
Because I actually kind of agree with you. Think a conversation is better because then we offer, there's so much more to be heard, heard in that conversation around how easy it is to get business license here, everything else that you're not going to get because you're going to stumble on a, you know, a Lewisville page, see a bigger number and then realizing you're, you're stuck in purgatory for permitting.
Right.
I guess my, my thought was that I, it, I mean, we're talking about it tonight, this is public, you know, so we want to be as easy to do business with as, as possible. And, you know, if somebody's going to look at like, oh, this is what Broomfield's economic development website looks like and this is Lewisville's and boom, 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 they're getting all this information and then all of a sudden, you know, like Superior doesn't have like a published incentive package, even though we have it, it's just not easy to find and like, what's the purpose of having it? Like, I guess we should be consistent with what our neighbors are doing. I mean, if everybody's not disclosing it in a very clear manner, then maybe we follow suit. But if they all are and we're not, then we're, I think, just harming ourselves.
Staying in the economic incentive theme, but changing topics with Sundance coming to Boulder, is there a larger regional conversation around economic development incentives and helping, whether it's through the chambers of commerce, trying to, you know, attract businesses to be ready for that? And maybe it's too soon because the announcement was fairly recently, but.
We should be talking about it.
Yeah. Hopefully the new broker for the almond site is.
I've already mentioned that.
Yeah.
They already mentioned, yeah, they're, they'll probably be coming forward to us with some form of request for an incentive for a new hotel there.
Two, three.
Yeah, I've been talking about it. Even before it got Sundance, my, my thinking, my talking point was, there's a good possibility we won't have Sundance. Yeah, because, you know, what the whistle, get them thinking about what the opportunities are going to be now that we do have it. Yeah, that's definitely a talking point every time.
When we go back to the incentive slide, so my, and I'm directionally okay with this, but, you know, the, the conversation with Lewisville is one that we have to have. The other conversations with Carmel CBRE, right? Because it can't be the town. If you go back, you know, two mayors ago, Andrew Huckle was up here very emphatically telling the community, we're not going to spend any tax money on downtown, right? Period. Like downtown was all going to be self-sustaining and everything else. And we have spent like a million and a half with Promenade and the fifty thousand of Boulder Baked. But, you know, and because we gave, you know, we gave them a gazillion dollars of the TIF. And the TIF was not about building a whole bunch of homes. The TIF was about building an economic vibrant core. And if Carmel CBRE are not ponying anything up here, we got to be really cautious about throwing more tax dollars after them. So that's my, my hesitation. I mean, I'm all for getting Main Street filled in, but, you know, if they screwed up and built a very difficult, hard-to-rent space, it's not our job to solve that problem that they created. Right? I mean, they, they're the ones that chose to build work, work, workspace, work study, work, live work. Now they're struggling with it. And now they're looking at us to bail them out, which is not our job.
Well, I, we did ask for information from Carmel about their, how much, what their average, I guess, because they said it depends on the user of assistance with tenant finish.
Yeah. But someone that's being incurred because, yeah, someone that's being incurred because they built it wrong, right? You know, be like, like, remember, you know, someone at Crack Bubba's had to deal with the stuff that if this had been built by a proper contractor, they wouldn't be incurring those costs to begin with. You know, or even our own space, we're having to move space because they just, you know, they hadn't hung stuff for a while.
The H-back for the barbecue, what they were saying is, just in First Fridays, they were saying it was going to be like a hundred grand more than what they even anticipated because of all the tariffs and the H-back.
Oh, that's another area. Yeah, I wasn't even, I wasn't even thinking about, you know, their ability to buy stuff. I'm thinking about just Carmel CBREs, they've got to have a massive seat at the table because they're going to derive way more revenue than we are. We're going to get one-point-three-seven-five in tax revenue forever. Maybe it goes to two-point-seven, but they're going to be getting rent and everything else. They're going to recover their costs much quicker than we will. Right? I mean, for most businesses, for us to get back to seventy-five thousand, it's going to take a long time or a lot of revenue. If you only have fifteen hundred square feet, that's a lot of revenue per square feet.
It's a decade at least.
And our, and just keep in mind, our sales tax rate's gone up.
Yeah.
The two-point-seven is just what was, it was the sales tax rate at the time with the agreement with Lewisville. So anything above that, the town keeps that additional portion of two-point-seven without sharing.
Yeah, but some of that's one of the capital funds, some of the places, right? So I just want us to be really cautious here because it can't be, our incentive strategy can't be the same for all of Superior because the economic return to the community is different.
I'd be interested in us sitting down with Carmel and maybe going through the incentives they're offering, the issues where things aren't built correctly, so now it can affect them coming to do that.
We'll be meeting with them next month so we can start that conversation with them and then have a sit-down. Maybe, maybe at the June, we'll see when, they're hesitant to come to our public meetings, but maybe we can get them to come to the, to the June work session.
Buy them a few drinks.
Yeah.
But, but you bring up another point. I mean, in terms of any business right now, it's going to be carnage in the next few months. Right? It's just, I mean, because right now China's good to say, hey, okay, we see that.
Crazy.
Yeah.
Those can also be building there too. Anybody wanting to build a home or a new developer, like Richmond or Richmond wants to do something, it's a massive undertaking.
Yeah, but anybody who's trying to go with any sort of commercial development is going to probably struggle for financing now too.
Yeah, it isn't that typical.
And Carmel too, I mean, like the thing with Carmel, they're a residential developer, they weren't a commercial developer, so they're trying to learn on the fly also now. So when Ranch Capital said, hey, take it.
Well, first they gave it to Morgan.
Yeah. So.
And Morgan failed.
We're going to work out, me and Matt.
Can you talk with them? Because I know Jill was going on those site visits, which I think was a huge plus with their leasing person. Can we make sure that we're getting invited to those? I think it would look good of us to make sure we have like someone on board, somebody going on those to help sell the property.
Yeah, there was a conversation with Jill, but then she's no longer here now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know that she, anytime she could, she was going on those.
Yeah.
Having done one.
Well, yeah, I mean, the idea was one of us, either you or I would go as well as a liaison, but we've got to try. I think the new person we bring aboard will be mental to that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Keep it up.
Thank you.
I mean, you would hope that, I mean, I don't know what their, what their P and L looks like, but, you know, they typically wouldn't want to just have vacant space.
Occupants get paid more.
Right? Like, they like to lease the space to somebody that's actually going to pay some rent, you'd think.
You'd think. People that can do it.
Or charging rents that people are willing to pay.
That's it.
But I'm not an economist.
Mark, can we visit?
Plenty of jobs in the White House, we're in.
So can we, I mean, I just wanted to make sure Matt knew, can it be presented, but presented with a caveat?
Yeah, for sure.
The conversation, because to be honest, there might be someone who's looking at three thousand square feet and we sit around a table and, and there's incentive on multiple ways to sit with them. And again, that will come with relationships and the new economic development person. But I don't disagree. I'm all about transparency. I just want to make sure there's some flexibility in here for us to either go above and beyond because we are going to earn their business because they're going to want to be with us rather than our sister communities. But I also don't want us to be tied to this and something that we trigger and make sure we maintain these numbers or change them based on the current climate.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, if we, if this is on the website, there'd have to be an introductory paragraph or something that would explain that.
And dated with, you know, put on the website on this date. Because if it's eight, ten months from now and who knows what the world is like, those numbers are either great or they're not. So just want to make sure we don't get ourselves sick.
Yeah, I mean, I think telegraphing that we want to be open for business and flexible, want to be a business-friendly climate where people want to invest in our community, all the, all those things. But at the same time, like, we're a small town, we've got a limited budget and we can't do all the things for everybody.
Sure.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything further on economic development strategies?
It might be worth getting to dovetail back to Sundance, maybe at a future work session coming up soon, talk through some ideas on how we can capitalize that and get ahead of it. Because two thousand twenty-seven will be her.
Right.
Okay. Just building their hotel now.
I think you need to get Renee.
Yeah.
She can be the one to tell us.
Okay.
That's how I would approach it. She's going to be with Holder Chamber paired up and then they'll, she'll come to us and report to us is how I would hope it happened.
Maybe do some movie screenings in the plaza.
Yeah.
We've already, we've already done movies there. I'm not, I'm not joking, seriously.
I like it. I want signs on the highway that say, you know, open for business, welcome Sundance fans.
J or.
It's Colorado.
Yeah.
It's nice, it's true. Yeah. All right.
Can I make a, a suggestion that maybe we move the town holiday lighting next just so less they can get out here?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Dee.
I don't know. I think she likes to stay.
Discussion the town holiday lighting.
Here it has a bright future. I just wonder when the pun was going to come up. I'm sorry, was that too cheerful?
Too loud?
Actually, I think Neil brought this up. Do you want to?
Yeah, no, and actually I really appreciate the second page of this staff memo. It's the, I can't manage a budget because I want more lights. Number one, I do want us to stay within a budget this year. And number two, I don't know, you know, I don't know what our strategy is here, you know. And we seem to have this continued legacy of adding lights to Rock Creek. And it's really, truly the most least densely populated part of the community. Obviously, there's a legacy of Rock Creek having put up lights and that's their legacy. But there's numbers of neighborhoods here that have no lights within, you know, five-block radius. You know, whether it's Bell Flatirons, there are no lights whatsoever. There's Sagamore, there's Ridge, there's Saddle Brook, blah, blah, blah. So, you know, I, I want us to have a cohesive, what are we trying to do with the lights? And I think a lot of what we've been doing historically is, Rock Creek had some lights. We put lights on, on town facilities and then we slowly added some lights onto the commercial areas. Rock Creek backed off, we kept some lights there, but we didn't go sort of reassess what communities, what parts of the community deserve lights. And I don't know that this map tells me what we're trying to do with the lights other than we've got some in our commercial cores and I'm not sure I truly understand what we want to do.
So when the town is doing our lights, we did Town Hall, Grassroots Park and Coal Creek.
Yep.
That was it.
Yep.
And then Rock Creek did their own thing.
Oh, I get it. I like it.
And then we started partnership with Rock Creek and we took over management of the contract. And we kept the lighting locations that they had decided, you know, from previous years and slowly kind of added some, took some away where it made sense. This map is based on the council's discussion last time we talked about this where was to focus on the main entryways into the town and commercial cores and town facilities. And so that's kind of how we got to this map.
No, and I get that and as I'm rethinking that, there's still a large number of lights in Rock Creek and there's not a lot of lights in the other parts of the community, right? Because yes, Rock Creek has more entry and exit points, but you know, people come in and out of this town on the east side of Marshall and there's no lights there. So I don't know what the right answer is here. It just feels like to me, for a town our size, to have gone from spending 75K on lights to 100K and seeing no contributions from Bricksmore, from Ranch, from any of the HOAs, it just seems very asymmetric. I mean, don't get me wrong, I hate being perceived as a Scrooge, but it does feel like the lights, there's never going to be enough lights, like everybody's going to want more lights, period. But you look at Louisville, like downtown Louisville, it's all by the Downtown Business Association. Pearl Street and Boulder, it's all that Pearl Street Development Association or forget the exact name. And that's been around since 2000 or 1999. We don't have that history, right? While Louisville's DBA has been around for, you know, a decade and they do the lights, the city of Louisville just does the town facility or city facilities. So I don't know where this goes. It just feels, it's, it's sort of unsustainable to me when no one else is ponying up because we're the ones spending.
I think we should only be putting them where our businesses are and none of the residential stuff. If Rock Creek wants lights, then the HOA should put lights up. If Sagamore wants lights, they could put lights up. If Original Town wants lights, they could put lights up. Downtown Superior gets a benefit because they're there, but those, that lighting is for the businesses in the downtown Main Street.
Yeah, there's a town that down there at that time, which I would argue is a great use of those lights.
Are the lights that are on Colton and Rock Creek Parkway by Safeway, like those are businesses there. That makes sense. I have no idea what those lights are doing over there. I mean, I get it, there's an entrance there, but that is a totally residential entrance. And so I just, I wouldn't want to see them put back up there. I don't care if people think I'm a Scrooge. We don't have money to cover all of this stuff. And we're going to have less as people restrict and sales tax revenue goes down because people aren't spending as much. So I'm very much for getting out of any of the residential lighting stuff and only doing our commercial, the stuff that's going to be there to support bringing in people to shop and feel all those good things in the commercial areas. If people want to feel that way in their communities, great, do that.
And there's nothing in any of our ordinances that would prohibit Sagamore or any neighborhood from putting up, banding together to put up holiday lights.
Okay. And have we talked to the DTS? I mean, you know, as I look at the number of dots on here, the commercial dots are substantial at DTS. And I get it that there's only like two and a half businesses right now. But you know, Ranch.
I think each one of those red dots is the trees.
Each one is like a block, so yes, it's. And staff is recommending that we look at maybe cutting down on the number of trees we did, because we did like every tree.
A lot of every tree.
Maybe we do every other tree and then the civic space will be a new potential.
Because one of the things that, you know, you see in well-established commercial cores is sort of competitions among businesses for holiday displays, right? So they can do their own thing. We obviously need more businesses for this to work because, you know, every third business just doesn't look the same. But it feels like there's more that they should be taking the lead on and we can assist.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree, but it seems like it's maybe we don't have that critical mass. Three, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, this is a conversation, you know, back to what, you know, Carmel, you know, that conversation around like, hey, we've been doing this, you know, the last two years, we've actually had a lot of lights in downtown. It'd be good if they wanted to contribute.
And Bricksmore.
Bricksmore especially, but we know their answer. You guys are coming to Costco and Target anyways.
Not denomination.
They used to, Bricksbury used to put up lights. We can talk to them when we see them in May.
We lost a good number of the locations in Bricksmore and the marketplace just from the fire. So some of those electrical services were not restored. Not that they can't be, but they weren't. A lot of their signs that had electrical to them, they didn't repair that electricity.
So Bricksmore didn't choose to repair the electrical?
Or else it's not done yet.
Yes. They owe insurance money already.
Yeah.
Yeah, we used to plug into a lot of their sign, um, electrical outlets.
But they really do, do they?
Well, no, that gets back to the conversation with Bricksmore as well, right? You know, I mean, they've wanted more signage, more place finding, let me find. They can't, you know, give them electricity for that.
So is it, is it the proposal of the council to get rid of the yellow?
Yes.
All of them?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then stick to it when we get the inevitable consequences.
Sorry, Mark.
Yeah.
Guys hate Christmas.
We just like money.
Yeah, we like the economic impact of Christmas.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, Rock Creek, if the HOA wants to put lights up where the yellow ones are now.
Yep. Or anywhere else.
Or anywhere else, have at it. But I, I agree, I think we should focus the town's investment in our commercial areas to attract business.
People are not going to be happy, but let's.
Let them go ask the people in Sagamore about all their lights that they got.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand what everybody's getting at. It's just, you know, the residents at the end of the day, who, who is the residents that live in Rock Creek, they don't care if the HOA is doing it or if you're doing it, they just want the lights. So if, you know, if the HOA, I would love it if the HOA would step up and do it. I don't think that they will. And so then we're just going to have upset residents that we're going to have to deal with.
I think that they need to take that to the HOA then, not to us. Like we don't float them because the HOA.
And so. We've been bailing them out.
Yeah, and so, you know, I, I think we have, we've been kind of starting this conversation with the HOA, but we need to be very clear and just be like, this is what we're going to do and this is what we're not going to do. And like, we sent them that, that list of like, this is, these proposed locations, if you want to contribute, you know, this is how much they cost. I don't think they responded to that, right?
They did not.
So.
It'd be great if they worked with us.
There wasn't even like acknowledgement, like we've received your email.
At scale.
No, no, and they, when we met with them at the community center, they said they would take it up for consideration, but we never heard back from them.
Well, maybe we can check in.
So I, I would say like, let's, because what we don't want to do is we don't want to like jam them at the last minute.
Yeah, I mean, that's why it's April.
Yeah, I know.
They'll know in October when they go up.
So, so we just need to be clear and telegraph what it is that we're going to do and what we're not going to do. And then I think also when, one of the objections that I've heard from the HOA is they don't own the land or the trees upon which these lights would go. So we would just need to be clear that we would be granting them the license and permission to put it up there and that that won't be an impediment to them doing it. They just need to pay for it in contract.
Well, I mean, we can leverage our contract.
Exactly.
Which is what we said previously.
But they've just decided not to pay us anymore for doing it.
Yeah, no, but I mean, I think that that's what we did in the last communication with them. It was like, hey, we're not planning on doing these intersections if you want them lit up, you know.
This is what it's going to cost.
This is what it's going to cost, let us know.
I think that has to be the consistent response to residents that complain about it too. Is that this is what we, this is what we've decided, this is what we've offered the HOA. They haven't responded, if that's the case, and this is how you contact them.
To be fair, if the HOA uses the reasoning that they don't own the land, so they can't be putting lights on it, then I don't understand their argument of we don't own the fences, but they want us to make it.
That's too Scrooge though, do not.
Yeah.
It's a different concept.
They, they disagree with that interpretation too, so.
Well, that one's got an IGA behind it, so this one was sort of.
There's no way to like wean off of this, people are not going to like it.
Well, we've been.
We just have to be consistent in the response of what we've decided and why.
I think we have and we, like, there were more intersections with lights and they've gone down. And I think if we go to zero in Rock Creek, then that's kind of where we're at. Because we used to have lights at, I forgot the intersection, there's.
Christiansen.
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 And then Indiana.
Indiana is not shown here.
And at the North Hall. And at the fire station.
We just, we can't get the emails of residents calling us whatever the names are and bad stewards of the budget and then do stuff like this. That doesn't go together. Like, it's just not consistent. So I understand there's going to be hurt feelings about the joy of Christmas not being lit up in the Rock Creek area, but we don't have to fix that for them.
Yeah, I guess the rebuttal to that is, I don't think I've ever seen a, an email saying that we're spending too much on lights. I've seen the board talk about it and say like, we think we're spending too much, but the public, that's not the subject they're complaining about. They're complaining about all the other stuff, but not, not the amount that you're, this is, this is an expenditure where they're going to say like, actually, you're like this.
Yeah. Yeah. But that's, my point is, what is the like reason that the town government should be putting lights up in a private resident area? Like why, what is the, like, what's the justification for that? And why if one residence area, then that's all? And if we can't do all, then we shouldn't be doing any.
And if we're taking some away, then Coal Creek's still going to have lighting at all times. Doesn't mean gone too, okay. No, that's fair.
On the yellow.
Listen, one of your emails had said something about buying the lights, you know, like, do we reuse the lights? Or is it just, are they scrapped every year?
No, they have an inventory pretty much put aside for us based on history. Obviously, there's replacement along the way and, and they have turned over almost completely to LED now. So over the last few years. But they do like us to finalize the contract as early as possible. So if we add anything or we want something new or different, it does take them a little bit of time to source.
So how much do we think we're expecting to spend on this proposal without the yellow lights?
Like the trees that are, we cast them in Rock Creek.
Those ones are like 70,000.
15,000 or something astronomical.
Those are crazy.
Yeah, 17.
17.
Yeah. I did a little calculation if I can find it.
I mean, that's 34,000.
It's not close. Yeah, I was kind of saying where they were on last year, but not that side.
Not $34,000 sale.
I mean, I think we can drop it down to, and these are based on prices from 2024. So they're going to probably be at least 3% higher, but.
They come from China.
Yeah, hopefully we don't have to.
That's kind of what I was wondering, what are we buying versus old stuff?
I'm thinking about 70 to 75.
25% reduction.
And it, and it might be a little bit more than that when we get down to it, especially if we decrease Main Street a little bit and do every other tree. And we can throw some of that savings into civic space, doing something there.
We should definitely tell people sooner, like communicate this multiple times of the changes as like the fall season starts to arrive so that it's not like November and somebody's upset about it.
I wrote a blog about it a couple of weeks ago.
Maybe you could do a video and a bridge.
Make sure that my blog is the bridge.
And it might be helpful to mention how much we're going to be saving not doing that. Like, not everybody in the neighborhood gets it and by the way, it's saving this much by not doing that. Like, it's not a small amount.
I think any of us could write, you know, our position on itself.
All right, well, so I think the direction is let's eliminate the yellow, notwithstanding my objections to the spirit of Christmas.
Sorry, Mark.
Being saved. And let's communicate this to the HOA and let them know that, I think we should send a letter that just says like, we're going to go to contract with our provider in probably September.
Earlier.
Earlier if we can.
August, July.
Christmas in July.
In the event that they want to participate in it and leverage our contracts, let us know what line items they want to add.
Okay, and the same reach out to Bricksmore and Carmel.
For fresh memory, because I might be remembering the timing wrong, but I remember in my mind when the HOA used to do all the lights and then they backed off of that. Wasn't that the same year that the residents wanted them to litigate against the airport? And so I thought I remember as a resident having holiday lights taken away because of cost of litigation. Am I misremembering that?
I feel like I've heard that before too, but I don't.
No, I mean.
It's the exact same year, but maybe I'm.
It's, it was a coincidence, like they just decided, you know, I think to stop funding it. Maybe they, they said the town is just going to do it anyways.
I thought I remembered that.
They dropped off in 2020 and then 2021, they phased out over two years.
Yeah.
And they, they took it down from 50 to 25 and then 25 to zero. And like, that was right when then the fire hit and then the town said, well, we don't want to, we don't want to just like deprive the community of like any hope. So like, we, we funded it and yeah, now we're a couple of years removed, so.
Hope is God.
Well, we're just ready to just.
Yeah, they, they actually didn't fund it in 2019 and then they came back in 2020 and 2021 for 25K each. But they, you know, 2019, they didn't fund it.
And when was their litigation for those reasons?
2020, I think. I should probably have it here.
All right, so let's put together communication with the HOA, let them know like this is what the decision is going to be and remind them that if they, if they want to have lights in Rock Creek, they're going to have to pay for it. And they can either do it themselves or they could do it through us if they contribute and specify.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But like, obviously we need to have that answer by a date certain.
Yeah.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie. All right, we are on to item C, which is discussion of Kentucky and employee survey.
Jen? So I wanted this to be added because we talked about this a long time ago, I think. Well, that's relative, I guess, I've only been here for a couple of years. But the discussion was about the staff and whether they had a place that they could truly be anonymous and give feedback on whatever their experiences are and, or if they're having issues. on whatever their experiences are and, or if they're having issues. And so, this is a really vague, like, I don't have a necessarily like an end goal of, well, the end goal is to ensure that staff has a way to give feedback that doesn't run necessarily through you or, in a way that is, I know the staff's not that big, so it's hard, I think, for people to give feedback without it being easy to be like, well, I'm pretty sure he said that, or maybe a department only has two people, and, and so I, I don't know what efforts have been made to ensure that that feedback can be given in a way where they feel safe to do it and they don't have any concerns about reprisal or, and then it gets addressed, that if, if, for example, I'm not aware of any of this, but I'm just using, I just wanna clarify, I'm just using this as an example, but if there was an issue with you, how, who do they talk to? Who, like, who do they message through? How does that work? Or if there's an issue with their department head, like, I guess that would come through you, but what if there isn't a relationship or a feel of safety to come through you? Typically, in worlds that I work in, there are chains, but there's also options for, like, I'm not going through the people that I'm working closely with because I don't feel safe to do that, or I wanna communicate something that I know won't be received or amplified, it's gonna, you know, stop, so, um, yeah, that's, that's why I wanted on here to discuss. I wrote this in an email recently, but we have lost some staff over the last couple of years, um, and in top positions. And, um, I feel like for a town so small, that feels like a lot. So I feel like there is room for improvement on them being able to advocate for themselves in, um, whatever capacity that looks like. And if any, I mean, if anybody else has opinions about that or recommendations or tools or something, but I just, I would like to care for them better, and I don't know what that looks like exactly. And it might not even be the lane that I'm speaking about, but I, something's missing. I don't know what it is.
Steph, I spoke to Jen, would love a third party to conduct a survey completely independent that is anonymous, completely anonymous. That way they can feel like their feedback is being taken as well as, you know, they can be cri, not critical, but they can be open about their experiences as, as members working here, but they also like to be able, not just staff to the upwarded people, but also the board too. You know, I, I think we should also open that up to have staff, are we doing a good job? Are we being respectful? Are we, are we taking into consideration and serious what your growth pattern is?
Yeah, I would be interested in that too, because, I mean, I know if I'm doing something wrong or things are being perceived a certain way, I would wanna know about it so I can address it. So I'd want us to be part of that too, for sure.
And I know specific experiences in the past where staff, where elected officials have treated staff in ways that were completely inappropriate, and there was no mechanism really for them to, um, run that back somewhere for consequences, like, there just wasn't. Those people aren't here anymore, so, just to clarify.
And some of the top positions in recent, you know, last five years, been retirements. You know, we've had a couple that just retired, um, some took other opportunities for other jobs, so, um, not everybody that's left was unhappy or dissatisfied with their position. But we do an exit interview, um, on their last day, so we, and people are pretty open and honest in those exit, but we send that to the supervisor, the department head, and myself, I'll get it, so they can see, you know, ways they can maybe improve moving forward, but, um, uh, other municipalities have done surveys similar to this. So it's something I think we could do.
No, I don't think we need to like reinvent the wheel here, right? Like, this is just like a, a gen, generic kind of like organizational survey that, you know, some third party group that does these things pulls it off the shelf and is just like, you know, asks all the.
Yeah.
Questions, we might have to like tweak it in a little, you know, because we're a government and we wanna ask questions about like the electeds as well, but I mean, like, do you like your supervisor? Do you like people you work with? Like, what are your, um, facilities like that you work in?
Yeah.
Your office space nice, like, all that stuff would be helpful, so.
And maybe that isn't like necessarily an annual thing, maybe it's a every, like.
Few years.
Three years thing, like, I'm not interested in like checking a box of like, we did a survey and we paid for this and that, but we didn't change anything or create any avenues for them, so I, I just would wanna be careful of that, that we're not just being like, good job, we made a thing for them, and it doesn't have any actual impact. So exploring some of those options would be helpful to see what the end results of whatever, you know, top few offerings of those are, and pricing too, I, I mean, that's gonna be a part of it, but.
Yep. Well, I think like, we, we'd like, when the O and M building came to us, right, like, we all supported it. But that was something that, you know, I, I didn't hear really anything about that when Alex was here and then, you know, Brandon comes here and that's, it's gotten escalated and we're addressing it, and I feel bad that like, we let it get to, you know, to the condition that it's in now, and I'm glad that we're doing something about it, but that's the sort of thing that I would hope that like a survey like this would help to answer, you know, like, and catch, like, all of a sudden we're hearing from like one department where they're saying like, you know, the heat doesn't work in our building, it's freezing, like, like, wait a second.
We had to bring in a bunch of space heaters, cause.
Yeah, like, why is that only, why are we really hearing about it now? So.
Jen, to your, your comment about, um, some comments from the, from previous boards directed towards staff, how I have seen that addressed in other organizations where elected officials were sort of taking it out on staff is usually conversation with, between the city manager and the mayor with that elected official to say, you know, we need to keep this professional and above board, and I get that you might be frustrated or whatever, but no offense, I take it out of the town manager, the city manager, not the frontline staff.
Yeah, or volunteers.
The department director, right, because that's not appropriate, so if that were to happen in the future, then I would say, I think it would be totally appropriate for the town manager and the mayor to have that conversation with whoever that elected official is. Again, that's how I've seen it work in other organizations.
What are the, and again, that's not for this board, but I've heard from past members, what are the consequences past that conversation? Like, if you have the conversation and then a council or board member continues to be inappropriate or hostile, like, what happens?
Well, unfortunately, well, fortunately or unfortunately, as elected officials were accountable to the electorate, so there's really nothing from a personnel standpoint. However, what I've, some activities that I have seen happen is that, um, the mayor will sort of make that executive call and like, you are to no longer email this person, and then they work with the city administration to basically block email coming from that elected official to those employees. But I think that's an extreme example, but I, I've seen it come to that.
I mean, it's happening.
Because at, at that point, it's ordering on harassment.
That's happened at the state level recently with one of the electeds was abusing her, their staff and sort of using, having them do things that were unrelated to the job, you know, so that, you know, Senate leadership stepped in to sort of strip them, yeah, you probably know what I'm talking about. Yes, this stuff does happen. It's the, it's the biggest challenge between being elected by people and then, you know, staff is here, sometimes the staff is there before, and you sort of assume that the people getting elected are not idiots, but, you know, some of them are.
Well, Broomfield just censured one of the city council members for, uh, like, one of them just like went off on staff and like, so they censured him for exactly what you're talking about. So I mean, it's not.
Does that mean exactly in terms of consequences, like, for that person to be censured, like?
Just means you've been reprimanded publicly.
Okay.
But, I mean, there's, there's, you know, you know, I think our town code and I don't know what the charter says, but there's, you know, I mean, there are limited grounds by design, but you could, in theory, remove somebody if they're like in like dereliction of duties and doing something, but, but that's pretty, pretty hard and pretty severe.
I mean, to my knowledge, I don't think anybody on previous boards has been abusive to staff, but I might be wrong. You know, I think there's differences of opinion in terms of how organizations can be run, that sometimes the nature of the dais makes it difficult, that's Matt's job to kind of play that, that layer. You know, just speaking for myself, post-fire, during the fire, I think I was mad at everyone.
Well, I think, I think the, the idea of third-party survey is, is a good one. So I'd say like, let's get some, uh, costs from some firms that do this sort of thing, and, um, I think I'm, I'm directionally in support, provided that it's not like a gazillion dollars.
The savings we just made.
Right.
And I, I think to the point of, you know, whether it's every other year, every three years, it kind of doesn't matter, we just need a starting point now. And then future boards can decide on the cadence, but, you know, because we've been, you know, even a community health survey we hadn't done for so long, Erie's been doing it every two years, and they can, they can continue to evolve. We did large, we got all sorts of great information, I think the same thing would be true with staff.
And then just going back to the point that was made about elected officials directing probably inappropriate comments, I, I also think that that's our collective responsibility to dial that back and say, hey, so-and-so, I think we're crossing a line here and, you know, we're fine to disagree, but let's keep the comments at a professional respectable level and, and hopefully some of that peer pressure can change behavior, but in extreme cases, then usually, like I said, I've seen the mayor step in and have to sort of deal with it. Not that I'm volunteering you to do that.
No, but I also think it's also a plug for Matt, right? I mean, that's why, you know, for the six and a half years I've been on the board, every communication I've ever had with staff, he's always copied it, like, every single piece, so he always knows what's going on and that none of his staff gets directed by one of us to do something that he's not aware of, right?
Yeah, so let's segue to E U, which is discussion of council staff communications.
Yeah, I had a request from some council members to add this on there, um, so let them kind of jump up. I will say though, that my concern when I first saw this request was talking specifically about a individual employee or a personnel matter, we can't do that in public, so we need to keep this discussion more general in nature and not about any specific situation, so that's my ask, is we have this discussion. What's the, Jason, you sent the initial email.
Yeah, I just think we, we need to, we need to streamline the chain of command when we deal with, with the, with the, uh, with the constituents and the town when difficulties come up, and I think we should handle it like most organizations, whereas if we're a board and communication goes through Matt. For example, if we have, um, director of shenanigans, because we wanna talk about departments, and a constituent has an issue with something, that would come to us, we would come to you, and you would go to the director of shenanigans, and it would come back and we'd be able to repeat the process this way. It's more of a circuitous route to get information available to people, but you being the town manager, you're essentially the CEO of this corporation, so you're the person that has to manage staff. We don't manage staff, you do, so I really would like to see that if we could make a more concerted effort to direct comments directly to you to go to the department head rather than we go to CCU or make direct inroads, just would, creates a better buffer, and I think it makes staff feel a lot more safer the fact that you're their boss, not us, and you can, you know, you could relay the information that way. I mean, it's really no different than any way a Fortune 500 company would handle information that way.
It ties in to what Neil mentioned about being, CCing me on emails, just so I can make sure the council is getting what they need, whether it's information or assistance with something, um, or, you know, if you have any questions or we're responding to you, if there's an issue out in the community, then I, I'm aware of it, I can talk to the, the department head about it and we can work together and help council members get the information they need to help message it out as well, so I think that's what I always strive to have happen as far as CCing on emails and just making sure you guys are getting what you need.
Yeah, I just look at like, it strengthens your position as the key person to go through, rather than we go to the director with a CC to you. I, I think it would just be a safer alternative to, you're the point man on this, because that's essentially what you are. You, you are the boss of staff, and if we go, like I said, director of whatever it is, Matt, could you please get an answer on this to me?
Yeah, I'm fine with that too, but I'm also okay with council members talking to department heads. Usually I like to keep it at the department head level because, you know, they're, um, but council members, reaching out to them to ask questions or if you run into them and you have something, I've always been fine with that. Cause I feel like my staff knows that if there's some, there's a question about something that came out, they'll come to me and we talk about it and decide what's the best approach to handle the question or issue or whatever it might be, so.
Yeah, but that process didn't work this last time, and we're not getting into specifics, there has to be a means in which the staff feels as though they're being taken seriously, they're being, you know, advocated for, and I think that necessary stuff has to be us to use them.
I, I would just like to ask, um, in, between council member communications, um, this last, like, it's not over, but with Sagamore, um, I was really disappointed to find out that there had been communication going on for a very long time before it became, before it came to everyone else. And by the time it came to other people, residents were super angry, and when I started to unravel things and see how far back conversations had been going on, I would just like to ask, if you're dealing with something, I know that we're all elected individually, just to the last point of if we behave badly, that's on us and there's not a lot of accountability, but if there's something going on in the community and you're involved with connecting with people and you have any idea or thought that it may become a thing where residents are now asking the board or the council or asking other resi, like, if, I don't, there's no definition for this because it's nuanced, but if you're working on something and just please consider it occurring to you to let other people know that this is a thing before it lands on the lapses of other people and blindsides them. Because I, I had, I was in a situation at the school with parents and I had no idea what was going on because I wasn't involved in the conversations that had been going on for weeks, and part of that on me because I didn't, well, didn't know it was happening, but I thought about it, and I'm like, well, how could I have known that it was happening? No one told me until a resident told me, and, and there was, that was really frustrating, and I don't wanna be in that position again. And I don't think it needed to look that way, and I, I, so my ask is just, if you're working on something, just tip off the rest of us that this is a thing or that you're, something could be going on, or, like, I, there's a lot of things we all work on that never need to get communicated to all of us, but there are some things. And if you see it trending in that direction, just let everyone know, um, cause that, that is still not going well for the communication piece of the, of the community there. That's all.
I'll offer my thoughts on kind of how we ended up where we did, because it's a little bit of both, right? You know, so staff, a community member comes to me, I go to staff, staff is Matt plus staff member, hey, can you answer what the heck is going on here? At the same time, that community member keeps on looking for answers, and I still have not gotten an answer from staff. I'm not sending that to the rest of the board saying, I'm waiting for this, cause I'm still waiting for the answer. Staff member may call me with an answer. I don't know how to, how to take that audio conversation and turn it into an email to update the board. And that's some of the problem we've had right now, is that there's so many different ways of communicating. I'm getting texts from some staff members, I, I don't know what to do with that, um, and then I'm not able to share that, or because a community member has shared something with me, but then didn't say you could explicitly share this with the rest of the board, like those pictures. but then didn't say you could explicitly share this with the rest of the board, like those pictures. I had to wait for like three days. Okay, you can share it with everybody. So I'm not sure the right way to do this. And what happened was not intentional. It was more of, Matt and staff, please tell us what happened. Give us the communication and communicate back to the residents. And even that communication back to the residents, we didn't get copied on it. You know, I got it back from them because they sent it on to us. So I didn't even know what had gone out. None of us knew what had gone out other than the pieces that we saw disparately. And if you take this one situation and you exclude it, I think historically we've done pretty good where, you know, a staff member will email, I'm sorry, a resident will email, a board member, a board member will go to Matt and staff. And Matt's usually done a really good job of, you know, things that he thinks we all need to know. He'll be the one that sends out. Because again, and the other piece of this is I go back to when I got on the board, Kendra yelled and screamed at us about creating a meeting on email. Like, so for five years, I do not copy anybody else on the board because then I created a meeting. I think it's a little less emphatic about that, but Kendra, I mean, this was...
He's been mad lately.
Yeah, no, and a lot of this comes back from Kendra. I mean, she's like, do not create a meeting on email. This is a meeting. This publicly noticed, but email is a meeting. And if we have more than two board members on it, all of a sudden we created a meeting and everything goes sideways. I rely on Matt to kind of manage that.
I don't think I'm understanding that the same way. Because when I want to say, hey, guys, heads up, this is going on, and I email all of you, as long as you don't reply, you're not like making a meeting. Well, what if I blind copy all of you on it?
That's probably okay.
Because then you can't reply only to me.
Probably the attorney would say the safest way is you email each one individually.
Well, I've been doing it on them.
Right.
And I understand that. And I think that you're, I think you're right about excluding this. This has not been an issue. But I feel like this was a big one and we lost somebody over this. And maybe there's other circumstances, but that's how it feels. And I think that's how it's going to look to the community. And I just don't want that to happen again. And so I just like a recheck in to be considerate of, I mean, in that case even, it could have been, hey, there's something going on at Sagamore, just a heads up, I don't have answers yet. But just know that if you're walking in Safeway and someone asks, you know, we're working on it. But I, it was, they were beyond pissed by the time I heard anything and kind of not ideal. And it also felt a little like there was quietness about it in protecting somebody who doesn't want to be talked about because of their position, which is not how we should be doing business. Like, that's not transparent. It's not for the public. It's for one resident. So I just, it doesn't look good on any of us and I don't want to be a part of that. But that's, because it's going to make, it affects all of us, even if we don't, we're not subscribing to that model of how things look, so.
But also less credibility. I mean, that's the one thing I don't, my thing with the board council, you know, we should never be seen as being scandal or, you know, being, being in some sort of, you know, situation where we're not looked as doing the right thing. And through the messaging with that, we would respond over and over with the same thing and it was not believed. It was no, you're wrong, this is conspiracy theory. Or when this person resigned, oh, there must be another reason for that. It's like, the messaging has to be handled correctly the first time, the right way. And that person's, what that staff member comes back with, this is why we did this. It needs to be backed up by us. As long as we understand what they're doing the right way and they've done things for the code or whatever the reason being, that person deserves our support because essentially they're doing the job that we, Matt hired them for. And if we don't, you know, why are we here for that? You know, we need to have, excuse me, I'm yelling. Saw is cutting all day today, so my voice is kind of off. But we need staff to, staff has to understand we have their back. And then we support what they do in their job and we appreciate what they do. And then we realize it is a difficult job and not a lot of us can do. And I just think that message for them is going to be something that they are really going to take to heart if we can get that across.
I mean, I think the, I think we're all on the same team here. We're all working towards the same, same goals, right? Like we're representing the residents, we're trying to provide like the best services as a town. And like collectively, like we're all volunteers, we're all trying to do our best. And, you know, we don't always have the same information. Things are fluid. Sometimes you get clear answers to certain things. Sometimes that leads to more questions. You don't know how people are going to respond to emails. You don't know what else is going on in the background. And, you know, it's, it's really hard to, you know, I think we all try our best. But it's kind of really hard to necessarily put in like some very systematized way of doing this. Because at the end of the day, if I get an email and you don't, and then Matt gets an email and somebody calls and then something else happens, like, you know, it's, it's too much chaos to try to kind of come up with like some sort of like regimented structure where like, and like, I certainly don't want to just like funnel every single email to you and blow up your inbox and go like, here, Matt, you handle all of this. I think what we do typically, like, you know, reaching out to a department head, CC you so you know that it's, it's happening. So, you know, it's not like I'm reaching out to Leslie and saying, hey, notwithstanding everything that was talked about today, we're doing holiday lights everywhere in Rock Creek. You know, screw the, screw the council. You know, copying you so you know what's going on. I think that typically, typically works, you know, really well. I think in this particular situation, we had residents who weren't satisfied with the answers that they were getting and they had additional questions. And, you know, some were less satisfied than, than others. And I think that some of those questions are legitimate. And, you know, while I 100% believe in like having each and every one of our backs and having staff's back, I also believe in like taking accountability for mistakes and we're not infallible. And when we make mistakes, like we need to own it because sometimes we will make mistakes. And what we don't want to do is like gaslight residents who are pissed off and then say, there is no mistake. And then just hide behind kind of like obtuse statements, right? Like, we need to own when mistakes are made and be honest with people about how we're going to deal with those problems. And also like when we can't deal with those problems. And when they're going to have to like suck it up and live with the consequences of those mistakes. So like, that's very difficult. But like, that's, that to me is what you need to do when you have like the crisis, when you have a real problem, is like actually own it, not obfuscate. And just be honest with people and tell them what you can do versus what you can't do. And then, you know, at the end of the day, like those folks might not be happy with the answers, but at least you're leveling with them and being honest.
And to build off of that, Mark, I agree with that. And I also think it's completely appropriate to say, you know what? I don't have all the information right now. Give me a few days to look into it and we can get back to you. Because I have a sense that we want to serve. We want to get, you know, as close to real-time information out to the person that's asking the question as possible. And in some cases, that's absolutely the right thing to do because maybe the information's at our fingertips. In other cases, we might have to do a little bit of digging just to make sure that we're, all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed so we can get the right information. And then whether or not the constituent believes the information is a whole other thing. But just recognizing that, hey, give me a little bit of time to make sure I get this right.
But there also has to be a, some understanding as council members that when residents, repeated questions over and over again, become harassment towards that staff member. And there has to be a point in time where we tell that person, no, this is the answer, period. That's it. If you don't like it, I'm sorry. I don't want to tell you. Because that's the truth, as we've been told by staff, and that's how we're going to present it to you. There has to be that level of manning up a little bit, you know, growing apparent, just not being afraid of the residents. And yeah, maybe it's a political thing we're in. Maybe people have their minds somewhere else down the road. But we have to be honest and say, look, no, this is it. These are the answers. You don't like it? Or it's not flat? Sorry. You know, it's like, these are the things we need to be more, you know, willing to say, look, come on. This, we've gone over this again and again and again, and it's the same thing. Nothing's changed. Move on. If anyone else we can help you with, great. But I don't want to keep flogging a dead horse because somebody's upset because they refuse to accept what we're giving them. Because what we're giving them is what the staff is telling us is the truth.
Well, for me, I feel like it all comes down to how we approach the interactions with staff and residents. So when issues arise and of course, promotions are high, you know, it's, it's always best, at least in my experience, and I certainly don't know everything, but to approach things with curiosity. So when somebody comes to us and has an issue, you know, we might not always have the answers right away. And it might take staff a while to get us the answers. But just setting level, set expectations of, you know, I didn't know about this. And let me learn more about it. And approaching staff with that same kind of curious, open mind of, you know, I heard this happened. Please help me educate, please help educate me on, you know, what was the process? How is this looked at? You know, bringing that into those conversations and communications as well so he knows what's going on. I like your idea of letting us all just have a heads up, like, hey, this looks like something that could snowball. Don't have all the information, but like just get this on your radar. This is a thing. Because I was equally shocked when it all came to light. But, you know, for me, it just, how we approach our residents and staff should be with a curiosity and trying to get to the bottom of it. And, you know, when we do get to the bottom of it and we know what the answers are, communicating that. And, you know, sometimes that's not the answer that everybody wants to hear, but it's the answer. And, you know, maybe there's some nuances or additional information that they say, well, you know, you're saying this and I get that, but what about this? Like, that's a good point. Let me learn more about that. But, you know, to me, it all comes back to having a curious approach instead of, you know, one bit, you're prejudging anything.
All right.
I appreciate this conversation because I feel like one of the newbies on, right now, like today, for instance, very different kind of level of conversation. But we got 19 emails on the same subject. And so much of me just wants to say, thank you so much for, you know, your inquiry. Is that something you're all doing? I asked Matt this question. I'm like, can I just ask everyone what we do with these emails? Because I feel like there might be, if you're answering one, you're answering one, you're answering one. I can't answer everyone or, or I can't answer all of us on that same one. I just want to make sure the residents know, almost like you do on the dais, Matt, you know, Mark, is thank you for your, you know, for your time or thank you for your comments. That's, I don't know. I just wanted to make sure.
When, when, when I met with like each and every one of you, like one-on-one, like the very beginning when, when everybody was elected, like, you know, I talked about how like one of the goals that I had of like, you know, this council was like to try to be responsive to like each and every person. Like, they don't need to hear from all of us, but they should hear from at least one of us. And like, how do we do that effectively? Like, sometimes we do it well and, you know, Stephanie will take on like responding to, you know, one kind of group of emails and CC the board and, you know, and that's, that's great. Even though probably, oh, she's creating me. But, you know, I'll look past that. So like, I don't know what the answer is to like, there's certainly no harm in you yourself responding, not copying the full council and just saying like, thanks for your, your email, like, got it, like, just an acknowledgement. You know, what Pandora's box that opens up in terms of like whether people want to hear that when they actually want to hear like, you know, something substantive, like depending on who you're, who you're reaching out to. So I don't know what the answer is and like what the best practice is. Like, I wish we didn't have that like open meetings like thing. And like we had like a way where like, you know, you can kind of thread it in like a, some sort of, you know...
Hey, I'm up it too.
So everybody would know, like, all right, Heather took care of these. Like, I'm glad somebody, because like I don't want to leave people hanging. But I still to this day, like, don't know what the proper approach is without like violating the open meetings laws. And maybe the, the consequences, like screw it, just violate the open meetings laws and CC the council and just say like, thanks.
I mean, is it violated if like, if I respond and I CC council, which I only do so, it's like, hey, everybody, this is what I said, so we're all on the same page and everybody knows that I responded and what I said. And, you know, if people don't respond to my email, but they have something where they're like, oh, she's wrong on that, can they respond to you? Well, they could respond to me and tell me that I got it wrong.
The lawyers will tell you that it's an open meetings violation.
Because if you did reply all and then they reply all.
But what if they reply to the resident and CC council so they can see, well, I replied and this is what I said. But they don't reply to mine.
Yeah, the lawyers will still say that that's an open meetings law violation, which is just stupid and frustrating, but it is what it is. Which is why this is like stupidly, unreasonably challenging when it shouldn't be, like...
I reply, if I'm going to reply to something that's complicated, I usually copy the cap tab so that we're not sending multiple messaging that are potentially the opposite of each other. But if I'm just saying, like with some of the airports today, I said, thanks, we're, we're, because some of them were asking specifically like, why didn't you talk about this yet? And like, because we haven't talked about it yet. And as soon as we do, then there will be an update, you know? So I, I replied to some individually and just said, thanks for... So it's totally okay to do that. And if they get seven individual replies, they'll be like, great, they're replying. So don't ever feel like you can't do that. But if it's something that, so no one else has to reply, I usually, it's usually not necessarily a positive email when I'm replying at that level to just to let other people know that like, I've said this stuff so nobody else has to reply if you don't want to. Because some of them are just not kind, you know, so.
I mean, I try to respond to as many as I can. Because I remember when I was on the other side of the room and I'd send an email and it'd just be crickets, right? Like, did they get it? Did I have the wrong mail address? Like, so hearing from any of us or more than one of us is usually like, great, okay. They finally, they understand what I'm talking about. They get it. And even if we send the same acknowledgement emails, I think it carries a lot of weight that, yeah, we are actually reading these things. But like you said, if they get complicated, you know, I'll probably give them my response. And what's awkward is because, you know, in some communities they have wards or districts. So you're talking and your representative is probably going to be the one that responds. But we represent everybody here. So if they hear five different points of view in four different emails, then, then they can see the challenge we're going to have to make a decision. I think it's okay, but I think, I always try to, when time allows and that's the challenge, I try to respond to as many as I can.
After one more thing, talking with staff. You know, we're elected officials, right? And we get dark words on us and we get people abusing us, saying all sorts of things. And that's part of the job, right? I mean, there's no complaining about that. But I would like to think that, was it, oh, you don't?
I said, not Heather.
Oh, no, no, yeah, not Heather.
Or not. I've gotten a few. Don't worry.
Time will come.
When people become abusive to staff, I would expect, and I really hope every person in this room would stand up to that person. And I, I got myself in a shitload of trouble a year and a half ago when somebody went for Matt's job on Facebook and this individual has been hunting me since. Every single thing online, in our MMA page, he's been after me. And I stood up for Matt. And I would expect everybody in this room to do the same thing because staff is off limits. You want to yell at us? You want to tell us that we're garbage online? Go right ahead. That's, that's fine. We're an elected official, but they should not be going after staff. That's just beyond the belt, in my opinion.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
I feel like if anyone's going to be a punching bag, it should be us.
Yeah, I mean, we are the representatives. And ultimately, we hire Matt, so the buck's got to stop with us, so.
I'm used to it.
But, you know, the problem is there's like so many forums and, you know, like, I don't read it all, right? Like, I don't know what's going on. So, yeah, I try to be on as little Facebook as possible. It's just toxic.
Yeah, to your point, both of your points, when we're made aware of it, I would expect us to stand up.
All right. Anything further?
For me, my original schedule I sent out for work sessions had June 2nd, which is the first Monday. In June, I wanted to ask if the council was okay with moving that to the 3rd Monday, which is June 16th. I'm going to be out of town. I just learned on June 2nd, so. So if that doesn't work, you know, Mark, we can run the work session on the 2nd. I think he's back in town, so if it does work, I'd like to move it to the 16th.
I know, I will be out of town on the 16th.
Okay, all right. So maybe we'll just keep the 2nd, because that's what everybody thought.
16th works for me.
You don't want 16th?
Yeah, I'll give you both.
16th is good for me.
I didn't want Mike to be here.
There's no meat in talks. I'll talk to Mark and then see, and we'll go from there. We'll send out calendars.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything further? All right, we're adjourned.
Thanks.
Thank you, I'll see you next month.
Should have something from Andrew tomorrow, so if you get a chance to look at those documents.